Everyone, and welcome to the November 28th School Board Meeting. We were in executive session discussing personnel issues. And I just want to let people know that we are being videotaped. And if we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we should get one. And then, I don't know if there's any participation in government students, but if we go past nine o'clock, which I don't think we will tonight, but I say that every time and we end up going past nine, but just come up and we'll take a break and you can sign out. And then I think we'll start with introductions. Jody?
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Lynn Lenhart.
Charmaine Woodgesinger.
Matt Downey.
Tom Douglas.
Diane Stevens.
Laura Berman.
DeMar.
Judy Keigho.
Okay. And then, visitors on an agenda item. If anybody that wants to talk on an agenda item. Yeah, if you can just, yep, if you can state your name.
Hi, my name is Jeff Brown. I just wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to provide the information to our board and architect regarding the proposal to install artificial turf at Bethune Central High School. I want to clarify first, make a clarification to the document known as Questions from the September 10 Community Forum provided on October 1st. There was question CQ1 about the financial questions about a possible synthetic turf playing field. It says that the district realizes revenue by renting district facilities and fields. That may be misleading because as Judy Keigho clarified on October 18th, the district currently does rent facilities to outside community groups. No profit is realized. The cost to run the facility is covered such as electricity and custodians. Sectional games furthermore do not provide profit for the hosting school. Concession sales are the only profit hosting schools realize. Further in the financial questions, it was mentioned that synthetic turf fields availability for play is, can be done in any temperature. From the research I've done, that's not true. Brigham Young University measured air temperature at 94 degrees, artificial turf at 165 degrees. Reports that I have seen indicate maximum recorded turf temperatures of 200 degrees. As it relates to the cost of such an endeavor, the, there's a case of Montgomery County Maryland Parks and Schools that I forwarded to Dr. Douglas and I think the board in general. Theirs, they did a 20-year cost summary of artificial turf. They found that the net cost is $2,600,000. Bermuda sand-based grass, $1,600,000. Michigan State University has done an extensive annual cost study. And construction costs that I have seen range anywhere from native soil turf from $50,000 to synthetic turf up to $1 million. At the October 18th School Board Meeting that was held at the high school, which was well-attended by boosters, there were lots of comments made in favor of the turf. I just wanted to refer to some of those. The sense I got was that many people thought it was time to bond for athletics. And I just wanted to remind that I believe, as Judy Keigho clarified for me, I think it was the previous bond provided a fitness center, a new gym, and a concession area. I don't think the athletics have been neglected through that, through that bonding endeavor. Music and theater, for example, still don't have state-of-the-art facilities and they continue to produce great individual performances. When they wanted a Steinway grand piano, which could be considered an extravagance, they raised the funds personally. Centerville, Virginia is raising funds privately for an artificial turf field as we speak. Some people had concerns about injuries on the grass field as it currently exists. I just want to remind people that injuries still occur on artificial turf fields. And I can, I'd like to provide this information. I've been researching to Dr. Douglas or the architect. I have a packet right here. Injuries will continue to occur on artificial turf fields. The question about academics versus athletics was raised, and I want to remind people that academics are mandated. Any extracurriculars are not mandated. Nobody's trying to take away football. However, most of the concern that I recall from that evening regarded football. And it makes me ask the question, are we talking about artificial turf for a modified through varsity football program benefiting 139 boys? I'll wait to see what the information is for the rest of this, but if we're including playgrounds in this bond, I would urge you to separate playground costs from artificial turf costs. A playground facility improvement benefits many more students, I think, than an artificial turf field would. I think including artificial turf in a bond is not wise in terms of finances. And furthermore, my research indicated that annual maintenance and replacement costs will add significantly to financial burdens of the taxpayers. Some of the, some of the information I found was that disposal can cost as high as $130,000 after the eight-year lifespan of artificial turf. Carpet replacement I saw as high as, I think, $500,000. And as I've said before, if you're going to an all-you-can-eat buffet, I don't recommend you gorge yourself just because the food is there. I think we should be responsible with our diminishing resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I probably should have made myself more clear, but we're not going to really take any comment at this point on the turf field, the bond issue, or any of that. I was kind of talking about the other agenda items. Just because we've kind of had a couple of community forums, we've had board meetings, we've listened to public comment, we've had several emails, so.
It is an agenda item.
It is, but it is an agenda item.
Can I just make a request?
Well, actually, the agenda item is a presentation for the bond issue. We're not making a decision tonight.
Can I ask, can I make a quick request? The board knows, I wear hearing aids. I forgot them today. So anyone who's using those microphones or also board members, if they could speak a bit slower and very clearly and loudly into the microphone, it's going to help me during the course of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else without no mention of the turf for the bond issue? Because otherwise, we could be here all night again. Okay. Approval of minutes for the November 7th, 2012 regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Student senate report. Superintendent's report.
Yes. Because the presentation has the potential of being quite lengthy, I'll keep mine just brief. On behalf of the entire school district and the Board of Education, I'd like to commend the following middle school students. Sarah Cohen, a sixth grade student. Michael Connolly, a seventh grade student. Michael Bartlett, an eighth grade student. And Alfonso Paredo, an eighth grade student. These were students who have advanced from our local intramural National History B winners. And if you recall, last year, we had a student compete at the national level in Washington, D.C. And these students will be moving along in that competition to try to also gain the same benefits and also outcomes that will highly benefit the district's reputation of being an educational prowess in National History B. And a lighter note for one of our administration here, I'd like, Sal, could you stand up, please?
It's my pleasure. The district is extremely proud of Mr. Sal D'Angelo for being commended by the ISTE. I think it's the International Society of Technology Educators. Anyone who's had the pleasure to work with Sal or his department knows that he takes a resourceful approach to his position, and he's very constructive in how he meets the district's technology needs. And he was just recently recognized as one of the leaders in the field at the recent New York State Computer and Technology Education Conference that I believe was held in Rochester. So we want to commend you.
(applause).
Also, we have a CASBA meeting that is tomorrow evening. I think it's in Britton, Brittonkill. For anyone that, if you have not signed up, if you could please contact Cindy tomorrow, she'll make any final reservations. That's at Tamarack High School. And my last one is a very good shining example. I think you've seen it on the Times Union, but one of our fall athletes, Mr. Victor Fox, was commended with numerous athletic accommodation accolades over the past couple of years in the area of golf. It's very nice that, you know, you get recognized within your field, but also within the capital region. Victor was named the athlete of the year for the region. And we've prepared a letter to go out to Victor as well, and he's received a scholarship to the University of Maryland, of which I imagine he'll be playing golf there, as well as getting a fine academic foundation for his future career. So our congratulations certainly go out to Victor for his steadfast determination, I think, ever since he was in middle school for our varsity program, and his accomplishments in representation of the district. So I'll keep that brief at this point because I know the presentation is one of the highlights of the evening. And I know I'd like to welcome Ashley McGraw here with Ed McGraw, I think Beth from Mechanical Engineers, ME, Sandra Mark, Pete Osborne, as well as Dan Hugh Crafton. You'll be seeing them rather shortly.
Okay. Board of Education report. You know, I just, you know, after the Thanksgiving holiday, I just want to just thank again all the employees of our district on behalf of the board. I mean, you've really made our jobs much easier. You know, the dedication, the hard work, I think, that all the employees put into the district. In fact, like when we were at that New York State School Board yell conference, you would sit around other tables and people would, you know, like our big thing is our budget and the bond issue. But other districts, they're dealing with all kinds of other issues. So just appreciative of all our employees and the great job that they do. And I know there's a couple, there's committee reports, too. I don't know if Charmaine or Laura wanted to report out, because I went to that process committee with the teachers, and I thought it was great. They were taking some great initiatives. I didn't know either one of you wanted to. No, okay.
I can find my notes. Just give me a second.
Oh, that's okay. No, I can just say it real quick. They're just, they're taking some great initiatives, you know.
I have notes. Just give me a second and I'll find them.
Yeah.
Did you even find something else? We'll find them.
Oh, okay.
Diane.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that a couple of weeks ago, I attended one of the information sessions for the parents on technology that was run by Laurel Jones. And it was very informative and I think a great help to the parents who were, good turnout of parents. I was there for the elementary one and the room was pretty packed. It was pretty mind-boggling to me because I have much older children. So realizing all the technological challenges that parents face in terms of the wide range of social networks and bullying and all those issues, it's pretty overwhelming. But she did a real nice job of covering all the bases. And then, at the end of the session, they had the student help desk people there. And the parents could bring their devices and they would help them figure out how to block inappropriate sites, or if they didn't know how to use something on it, they were there to help them. So I just wanted to commend Laurel and the other staff that were there for putting that together.
Okay.
I found my notes, if you want.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, are we supposed to?
It's really a dialogue between the Board of Education, the administration. If anything, what I would ask you to mention, just because I know the BCTA is very proud of this, that they're coming out, is they are going to host a couple initiatives for the community that the information will be coming out shortly. And I know Marcy's here somewhere. I know they're going to reach out to the newspaper as well to advertise some things for evening sort of like, how would you say, workshops for the community led by teachers. So.
I think that's what Mike was talking about.
Right, or one of them.
Right. I think what they, they were suggesting is we have a 8 to 5 event, including around the issue of having a balanced life, healthy eating, photography, yoga, that there'll be engaging faculty, parents, and the community.
Right, yeah. I just thought it was like a great initiative of bringing people together, so I just kind of wanted to.
Yeah, I know Marcy, our local reporter from the spotlight, will certainly help them out with that as well, so.
But again, it's just another thankfulness of the dedication and the hard work that the employees put in. So, any? What else? It's been a few weeks, I think, so.
I know. Well, I want to mention two things. One is, actually, you and I were at Slingerlands for the Veterans Day Assembly. Mrs. Baker, second grade class, does a wonderful job honoring veterans and reminding kids, you know, what Veterans Day is all about, and appreciative of people who have served and, you know, to give all these rights to us. The second thing is, I went to a NISBA workshop on the Dignity for All Students Act, and despite it being passed and we have policies based on the law, the law's been amended, so we're going to have to, you know, go back to the drawing board a little bit and make some changes with the policies. But it was, it was an interesting session. So just wanted to report on that.
Okay. Anyone else? Matt?
And just Wednesday night, I came to the fireworks that were here at the middle school. It was a great community event and wish to thank our town for sponsoring it.
Lot of people?
Yes.
I guess the police were inundated with phone calls because people weren't aware that the fireworks are going out, so they thought that we were being attacked and these are bombs going off.
They did have that new movie Red Dawn coming out that week, so.
In addition to the, the hooligans were there. And they, I mean, between the music and the fields lit up with fire trucks so the kids could run around, it was, it was really a fun event.
Okay. Anyone else? Tom, are you going to introduce again?
Check, check. How's this? Is it working? Can you hear me now? Okay, because I can't hear myself. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education, tonight is sort of a culminating process from the community aspect to the board's aspect of understanding potential facility issues and concerns over many years and deferments, as well as our obligation under New York State to make sure that we have done our due diligence when it comes to upkeep of our facilities and infrastructure. Through this process, we were working off of former numbers over two years old at that point. And we have just contracted the services of our new professional service architect with Ashley McGraw Architecture. And that helps us to give the board more detailed information that is relevant to any potential future costs. And that's what we have prepared for you tonight, as well as the community, to see. Tonight, we have members from Ashley McGraw Architect, as well as Appel Osborne, I think, Landscape Architecture and Mechanical Engineer, ME. I always try to not have the acronym, but ME is all part of one consolidated effort by our professional services to put together the best information for the information that's already been presented. So tonight, they're here to present. I'd just like to remind the audience, as well as the board, the initial numbers that we were working off of, like we said, were from 2010. But also on that is the fact that under each one of the documents, the numbers also had what's known as a soft cost figure that was not calculated into the numbers that you were seeing. So that is a cost that has always been displayed, but tonight will start to always be seen as they incorporate our version of the numbers to an architect professional document that we will continuously use from here on out. Once that's done, which we assume will be for tomorrow, we will also post that on the web so that you can see. That is mostly put up by building instead of by codes. And then, there will be some work for the Facilities Committee of the Board of Education in the coming week to two weeks to make sure that we work together and identify key priorities that are not labeled at this point. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to, I think, the lead presenter is going to be Mr. Dan Hugh Craft from Ashley McGraw. And the administration, Mrs. Keigho, myself, Mrs. Monroe, Ms. Johnson, Mr. D'Angelo, and I think our athletic director is also back there, and our Director of Physical Education Health is back in the back, that if the board has any questions for us, we will take those at the end as well to try to also give more information. The presentation at this time will shift to the ongoing infrastructure, and I'll just have to run up there and put it up.
We have a lot of information to show you tonight. One of the things we'd like to do is, is sort of take you on a transition from what, where we were last time, what we've been looking at, and kind of bring you into the format that makes sense for us as we're in this stage of the project. So actually, our presentation, just so you know, we're going to have some lists of items to look at. We're going to have some photos of some of those items. It wasn't really our intention to go through line by line by line. We certainly could come back to that at the end. So we'll have, and we'll go building by building. And then, we'll talk about briefly the technology portion. I'll turn over the presentation to Pete Osborne to talk about the fieldwork that we're looking at, and the different options that are being considered. And then, we'll come back to sort of a summary of what that all means and sort of how we put together a potential facilities improvement project. So as Dr. Douglas said, my team here, Ed McGraw, Beth, Sandra, Derek, and Pete and I, and others from our team, since I was at the last board meeting and said hello, we've been out to the site with Greg and Bob and Ron several times. We've been really digging through all the information that was provided. And as you see there, this is an incredible list that has been ongoing from 2010. And I commend Greg Nolte for really putting this together and giving it some thought. And this is where we were, and there was a ton of information. And it was ranked by priority. So it was kind of hard to get a real good grip on what's happening where. And so, we took that list and we wanted to, you know, officially resign that from, from here on in and go to a more organized list that focuses on the buildings themselves. And eventually, we'll show you the different trades involved with those parts of the building. In general, every bill, if it doesn't have a pool or a boiler or a site work, common themes that we'll see are looking at toilet rooms for ADA accessibility at some buildings. We'll be looking at roofs, windows, doors, and floors. Basically, the shell of the building, a lot of our projects will be, or a lot of the schools will be looking at the shell of the building. And inside, a lot of the flooring, we're still working, this is a work in progress, what we're going to show you. So we were working up until lunchtime today, trying to make sure we're getting good numbers and good representation of what it is we, we think we're seeing, and the scope and the importance of those. As Dr. Douglas said, we don't, we have not set a priority, high, medium, or low to anything yet. We still need to work with Facilities Committee to do that. But Greg did start looking at these things by their highest or most critical nature. So without further ado, what we'd like to do is start off at the high school. Again, we talked about these continuing themes that we're looking at. One of the things that was mentioned earlier, the numbers we were looking at in 2010, Building Condition Survey type numbers to develop a five-year plan, are a great and necessary tool that we use to build a budget for a project. And I say that because oftentimes, the State Education Department and the Building Condition Survey and looking at those things doesn't necessarily look at everything that you need to do or want to consider at your, at your schools. So we use that as a tool, a building block, and we take that and we've took, taken that list and organized it by school. One of the other things we did, and it was mentioned previously at another board meeting, is we put, there's a column on the left that we put a little X on that may or may not have some potential for an energy, EPC is Energy Performance Contract. So most of those items all relate to some kind of energy savings. At our kickoff meeting that we had as a team with the district, we also had a gentleman from National Grid come. And it was very great because he also, National Grid provides great incentives if we're doing replacement of pumps or, or anything where we can improve the performance of the old to the new. And usually, it's from very old stuff to new, high-performance items. And that's something that National Grid, they have a prescriptive plan for that, and there's specific certain items that definitely will fall under energy savings in this district. And so, we start, we've embarked on a, the process of doing an energy audit with National Grid for the district. And that's probably another week or so away, right, Beth? Okay. Does everyone hear me okay? Okay. I just say that because we're going to go through a lot of items. So if you have any questions, when we summarize the facilities, just let me know. Again, more of the high school, but high school and middle school have the most items on the list. Some of the items, as we mentioned before, have not been prioritized. So some of them towards the end may or may not be either related to academics, or they may not quite be funded because they're loose equipment or furniture. So you're looking at a list that really has everything in the kitchen sink in it. So we really want it to be comprehensive, look at everything there is. We know there are issues here and there. Bob and Greg and, and the, everyone at each building has shown us and talked to us about what's wrong here with the floor and things like that. And as I said, it's a snapshot in time. We're still getting some more information, trying to hone the scope of how much flooring are we going to do? How much security, security cameras, are they even on, you know, the list or scope to do? We know we have some towards transportation, but in the schools, that's an issue. We're also studying the generators. That's on, you'll see some of those on the list. So we wanted to keep them there as placeholders, so we know we're looking at everything we possibly can, and then, and then work from there. So here we have some, just some typical examples and photos. I really, we're really determined to find out if the stair on the bottom right goes up or down. Tough audience. So you see the roofing, issues with the roof. We're looking at the age of the roof and the warranties are up with the roof. But we've seen, you'll see a common issue here is that there's ponding and puddling on the roof. And sometimes, it's because either insulation is just not working anymore and it's not getting to the right low spots, or we need to add a roof drain somewhere here or there. We have, you know, a good catch of the gym because we're looking at the floor there, the bleachers there. There may or may not be some water infiltration at the back door. The ceiling and the lights are all issues that we want to look at, haven't been touched in a while. Same with the outside with the pool and the, the glass over the pool. So next thing on the list, this building here, the middle school, our highest priority items that we are looking at are everything to do with the outside, with the stone repair above the entrance, the masonry. We know there's some issues. We're, we're looking and still studying those issues. Again, this is a snapshot in time of what we've seen to date. A lot of the toilet rooms in the 50s wings are very difficult to navigate if there's any, you know, need for compliance there. Definitely need to look at those. Replacing old windows, very old windows. Or you'll see a common theme is windows that are old, they may be insulated, but they're not working, or they've, they've exceeded their useful life, basically. Also, again, we see some items for emergency generator there. This building has a pool, so we'll be looking at all of the pool issues involved. One of the things that I've noted is that, you know, just in terms of the age of the pool, I think it's on the next, is, you know, some of the tile is cracking. It's just age, use. Where schools are populated daily by kids, and floors and doors and windows and all those things are the ones that get the most use, so we're looking at all of those. I hope on this list is auditorium seating. Some representative photos. We have some issues out front with what's called the pit and getting down into the basement there. There's two entrances. They're really bad. They each have different kind of problems that we want to attack. The newish ramp that's out front has some issues, but on the lower left, you can see some of our toilet rooms here are just really desperately in need of help. And you can see the bottom left is this portion from the roof side of looking at the stone that's wrapped right now. So everything has, is, there's nothing loose that we know of that may come down right now. Next is Slingerlands. Again, some common issues here. The roof and masonry are incredibly important to look at here. The roof and masonry are incredibly important to look at here. Greg and I and Jack Healy, my structural engineer, were up on that roof, and there's some, and you'll see a photo, there's some significant issues that we have to deal with, with the masonry and the roof and where they join together. Because when they, through age, they stretch and come apart, you may expose the building to unnecessary infiltration by water, which we don't want to have in our buildings. You see the common issues of flooring, of doors, cafeteria floor. Some items you'll see, there's one or two, like refinished canopy, $20,000 corrected in-house. That's just a catchphrase. That was on the original list, but it's been done since the, since we put this together. So there's a few items there that you'll see that have been taken care of already. And so, again, this is a snapshot, a picture in time of where we are. The upper left is the, is a condition that really needs to be taken care of soon with this stone cap on the masonry wall, and it's just kind of pulling, and you can see it's open. So you're going to get some water, rain coming in that's not good. So a lot of issues are just covered up or patched. But again, this is one of those roofs that really is in need of attention. A big shot of the flooring, and also the gym flooring, and some padding that needs replacement there, just exceeding their useful life. Hammergrau. Hammergrau and Glenmont actually have some similar issues with their attic, their attic space above the newer portion of the buildings. But we're looking at flooring, that attic space, some site issues. Just various issues there at the building to look at. Another common theme you'll see is kitchen equipment. We did get a list from Paul Franchini, okay. We do have an updated list from Paul Franchini, looking at all the schools and all the kitchen equipment facilities that are there. Some of them, like at the middle school, they just, they don't have adequate hoods for the kitchen equipment that's there, or some of it is just old. So we have to look at that. Efficiencies are a big issue. We look at some sidewalk replacement here, that's right out front. There's issues just sort of in the front courtyard that we're looking at, as long with the metal roofing. We don't have, you may have already seen pictures in previous presentations, but really, that top picture looks terrible, but the sun was shining in on the camera, so it's just dark. But we're looking at the metal roof up there, and there's sort of a poke-up, which is a skylight, and you can see around that, shows a lot of water damage, I guess I'll say, that needs to be repaired. Lower right is issues where the gym floor has, I believe it's flooded there a while back, but it's the original gym floor that we're looking at that needs some help. Bottom left is some lintels out front that it appears, until we do some, a little further study or investigation and testing, that there may not be any, what we do now, we'd have flashing behind the bricks, so any water that gets in would come out. It seems like that's missing in this vintage building, and that's where you get some rust. We're still looking at those things. Glenmont, again, we're looking at those basics of the building shell, the roof, windows. We're looking in the attic space for the issues with the cold air coming in there. There's some site work issues of drainage. Drainage is another common theme running throughout the district list. We're, again, looking at, trying to gauge what's the most critical flooring. VAT, in case anyone doesn't know, is vinyl asbestos tile. Most of it is down hard like steel. Usually, it's almost impossible to get up. But in some cases, if there's continuous water or moisture issues, it'll start to pop up, and you start to see those. And for the most part, they've been replaced where they've come up. But again, it's an issue you have to deal with. And I think the district would, and the facilities committee would have to come to some kind of a decision on what it is they want to do with flooring. The big backyard is pretty neat, actually. I like it. We looked at that. It may be salvageable as is if we just kind of shore it up a little and make sure that the wood is treated properly so it doesn't get any worse. But I think it's actually in pretty good condition, it's kind of slanted though. Some issues we do see, these, this vintage of elementary school is the hallway, has some glass transoms over the cubbies. And in some cases, you know, teachers can paint over it, or they put posters over it. So we've, we've done this in the past where you have an old vintage school that would be grandfathered in to have glass separating it from the corridor. We never would build that these days. Code issues prevent us from doing that unless we use sophisticated systems for fire. So we'd be looking at that, what is the extent of putting in rated walls? But they'd be solid walls instead of glass. I think we have some pictures, on the lower left is a picture of that where it's all, the glass is all painted up blue, but that's to a classroom. The upper left picture, we pulled back the carpet, and that shows, well, we do have a continuous sort of, or chronic moisture issue that is really causing trouble in the cafeteria. So that's the flooring of the cafeteria. There's a picture in the lower right of the metal roof there. What we were talking about is, you know, the useful life of metal roofs is fairly long, but the finish or the coating on them sometimes shows a lot of wear, especially when they're on wind-driven sides or something like that. So we want to look at doing a new coating over those, making sure that they're still, from what we know, there's no leakage here, but that they're still intact and secure. Upper right is, there's a couple examples at Glenmont that the water is not getting to the drain, or the roof drain, so it sits there. This is a rubber roof, so we don't like to have water sitting there for longer than a certain time. And so if it has no place to go, it's going to sit there, and you'll get dirt and residue, and eventually, it'll just wear the roof out. So we'd like to make sure that that stays on the list for correction. Elsmere, it's a nice old school. Again, we're looking at flooring. We have some, you know, there are mechanical and plumbing issues at all of these schools, and I don't mean to, you know, just gloss over them. But we are looking at a handful of items here. There's some toilet room issues in the classroom wings. One toilet room has been modified for a handicapped accessible use, but they're really, I don't really have a good photo of them, but they're pretty much three feet by six feet little closets, and almost impossible to have handicapped accessible. So those are big issues there that we need, really need to tackle and dive into. There's some doors and framing, and again, they have the similar issue to Glenmont of the glass hallways on the upper left. You can see that with cubbies. Lower left shows the flooring. You know, you get into these areas where, and this is, I don't know, 70, 80 years old flooring. I mean, it's lasted for, you know, lifetimes. But again, that bottom middle picture shows over time, we have to take care of it. The bottom right picture shows the alteration that was done to two bathrooms to make it into one that's big enough. So we have that issue to address there. Upper right just shows, this is a typical example of the windows. The windows have those blank panels above them, so you only get the light in from the lower section. But those windows are a very big problem we hear with maintenance there as well. And for the rest, we don't really have, we weren't going to show too many pictures for the rest, but we have Eagle and Clarksville. And, you know, there's a handful of items there that we're looking at. One is this harmonic issues, this is electric usage harmonic issues. I'm not an electrician, but I know that there's a usage issue that's going on there, and we're trying to track that back to its source and find out how to correct it. We also have some electrical issues, they're not similar, but they're, they're of a significant amount at the high school and middle school to kind of really trace back where all the electric, the conduits, and the panels go. It's a very labor-intensive issue to look at, and you'll see those in this, in our summary capture sheet of all the facilities, where the old number is boosted up, and a lot of, I can explain the cause of some of those increases as well. Transportation O&M. We have similar items here. We do have some Xs, you know, sprinkled throughout this for possible energy performance contract, which we're still studying, whether it makes sense to do separate or have it in a bond. And then there are also some district-wide improvements that we're looking at. Some are within the buildings or around the buildings, and we've broken out the list of playground work that we would like to see on, in a bond to work at Elsmere, Glenmont, Hammergrau. Some bleachers, some drainage, things like that. So we do include, again, this is a snapshot of including everything, as comprehensive a look as we possibly can. And then actually, God, today's Wednesday. Tuesday, yesterday, Sal and our IT consultant, Metterd, also, he came out and visited, didn't he, correct? Met to go over all these items. What we're concerned with is to make sure any of these items here have the proper backbone, they have the proper power, the cabling, all the, all the things that connect them to and make them work. And that's one of the things that we're really looking at as part of the bond, to make sure if those are included, that they can be installed, and there's power for them, and they're in the right place, and they have air conditioning for units that need to be cooled, things of that nature. So we've gone through that, and we met yesterday to go through each of those items and come up with strategies to take care of those in the, in the other, the list that we saw. So what I did, I apologize that the numbers do come out small when you put everything up on one sheet. But what we wanted to do is look at just a comparison of where maybe two and a half years ago, the BCS costs looked like from each school. And don't hold me completely to the bottom number of the old issue, because that old list we had did have some zeros in it. And so we looked at kind of filling in, so nothing had a zero amount. But it looked like including building-wide improvements, site work upgrades, and technology upgrades, seemed to be about at a $12 million project budget. And as we went through it, again, we're looking at, we are looking at 2014 potential construction costs, because we know doing a school project takes a long time. And it takes a long time to do the design documents, and then get them through the state ed department to review, and then finally get to the chance to build them. And some, almost half of these items are weather-dependent because they're involved the outside of the building or the site. So we're going to assume that 2014, that summer, we would be in full swing of starting any sort of potential project. So we looked at a escalation factor. Typically, it's between 4% and 6% that people use, so, and it varies regionally. We're, you know, we're concerned with capital region versus non-capital region and those kind of factors. But we're using about a 5% for inflation at this point. It seems consistent with what we've been doing in other school districts. In the Binghamton School District, right now, we're doing a very similar project as, as being proposed here. And so we put a little difference column as well. And you can see there's, there are a few reductions. Some are very minor differences. There are some big jumps, and I can explain them at high school, middle school, and Glenmont, and the transportation center. But mostly, at the high school and middle school, there's a, there's a big issue right now, and actually, for several years, of when you're doing roofing work, to make sure when you remove a roof and put a new roof on, that you've double-checked conditions for snowdrift. And we looked at the building condition survey numbers, and it didn't seem like there's anything allowed for potential snowdrift study, which means when you have a high roof and a low roof, and the windward side, snow just piles up. So you get this weight of snow and ice in that section. The state, the code wants you to make sure there's reinforcing there. So there's added costs right now in those projects. We're, we're setting aside an allowance to make sure we have enough there for steel reinforcing. So this is, this is an issue we face now when we're re-roofing existing roofs and putting on new. We have to check those, and we want to make sure that we don't run into problems when we get there, and we have it covered by putting in that sort of allowance for reinforcing steel, things like that. At transportation, that kind of jumped up because, I think because we were looking at the heating system there, right Beth? And so going from, there's changes that are being proposed within that building itself. There's a new, we're looking at putting in a paint booth there as well. So there's a lot of reconfiguration of the whole heating system, so that kind of jumped up as well. And then, so we get to, our take on this right now is it's about $15 million instead of $12. So the differences are roughly about $3 million. And so, again, there's 5% of escalation as well in there, so that's kind of makes sense. And any questions so far on the building facilities that I may have not been clear about?
I had a question regarding the roofs. It seems like we're always dealing constantly with, you know, fixes are needed here, replacements are needed here. Is there any benefit to, if you're going to be addressing partial roofs to just doing the whole roof all at once, so you're sort of starting from a baseline with the whole project on, on a building, rather than doing these piecemeal replacements?
Yes. We've, I've worked on projects that have involved, over time, piecemeal replacements of like a wing here or wing there. And mainly because it's a big cost, and so you have to put your money where it's best served. But in some cases, like Slingerlands, I would never say, let's just do a section of this that's the worst, because that whole main old section is just shot. I mean, it's exceeded its useful life, so we'd want to make sure that's done. So that would be like, sort of a, we'd have to do sort of a comparison at each building itself. And I'm not sure if you meant district-wide as well. Some districts do like to have and maintain the warranties for all their roofs so that they're all like within a certain range, because we get 20 to 25 years on our, on our regular roofs, not metal.
No, I meant, say, at the high school, if you're going to be dealing with, you know, several sections of it, does it make sense to just do the whole thing?
Right now, we're looking at the worst sections. There are some good sections there that we probably wouldn't want to touch. In some cases, and I've done this before, with a not-so-old roof that may not have good insulation, but it, say, it's 10 or 12 years old, we've done a recovery system where we leave the roof in place and put on, you know, a little bit more insulation, a little bit of capture sheet and new roof membrane. Because if it's within its warranty, you can usually work with the roofing manufacturer to maintain and add on to that warranty. But sometimes, if there's leaks, or if there's wet or moisture that would get into the insulation, you can't reuse it. And in some of these cases, the roofing itself is over 20 years old, and that material is suspect right now in terms of its performance. So hopefully, that answers that one. So...
Yeah, I have a bunch. First of all, the order of items that you have on each of the buildings, what, what is that order based on?
Greg says no order. We have to, we, we do have to go back and look at high, medium, low priority.
Well, I guess what I would love is if you had the high school list up there. If you went back to Greg's old priority of the entire thing, and it might say, you know, 12, 15, 18. I mean, it won't go in order, obviously, but if we could see where those items are on your full priority list, so we know if it was something that you really felt should be done, you know, sooner or later, I, I think that would help us in looking at these numbers.
Okay. We do have that information for you, it's just not on, on these sheets, because it gets a little, little bunchy.
To take a stand, Dan mentioned earlier, you saw a little column, there was priority rankings.
Yes.
High, medium, low, yeah.
High, medium, low, which we have, we'll use that list, and on the sides, we'll be able to start sorting.
Okay.
And prioritizing each of the building lists.
Yep. No, that, that would be great. Okay. The next question I have then is, some of the items on the list, in my mind, sound kind of like, you know, usual items, not things that you would put into a capital project. project. Where's the distinction as to what would be in Greg's O and M budget list? I mean, and things I was looking at were, you know, carpeting or gym padding or kitchen equipment. I mean, I understand hood might be because it's attached or something, but where's the distinction made as to what should be in the general operating budget and when does it become a bond item?
I can sort of speak to the bond item part of it. I'll leave the general budget to Greg or someone, but when you go through, when you go through this process and you look at, I guess what we're trying to do is look at an order of magnitude, really, and at each building and what makes sense. One of the things that is important about the priorities too, is if you go in and say, you know, partial ceiling replacement or say we're going to do a floor in a room, there's a, there's a good question to ask, well, is that all you're going to do or do you, or you fix the whole room? So you start to look at these carpet issues or things like that or painting and they sort of interrelate. So if you are doing all new windows, you may want to, in that wing or something, you may have to paint the walls when those windows come out and patch them and that kind of stuff. Carpeting, flooring that's exceeded its useful life is aidable in a bond project. So some of those make sense to go in there for, for aid and just, that's normally what happens in school projects over time.
Well, I guess, and I don't know if this is possible, Greg, at all, but I guess if, you know, if with limited funds, obviously, you know, you're already at over $15 million here if we were to do it all. If funds were limited and we're not going that high on a bond, are there items that could come out and, and just become in your regular budget? Now, I understand, you know, we're cutting your budget all the time too, so, but is, are those things that would have a better chance of, if we put them in your regular operating budget? So I guess if there's some way to kind of identify those things that could come out of the bond if we needed to and put them into a general operating expense or budget, that, that might be helpful to, for comparison later too.
As Dan mentioned, we have talked office here and what you see up there is everything that we feel are needs for the most part from a, from a maintenance standpoint. We are kind of on uncharted ground here, we're still kind of playing catch-up, so it's a perfect question that Dr. Douglas and I have had conversations on about already. You know, there's certain things there, painting, district-wide painting, we haven't touched classrooms in a really long time. That's something, you know, we don't want to get into defer, defer, we need to have some type of well-maintained operating budget and staffing and protocols so we can maintain these things, so we don't have to wait every single bond to.
To get it done, exactly.
Or to do this or to do that, replace carpet. And if it's just a dollar number and everything under that, yeah, we want to handle under operating or the capital reserve. We're kind of in uncharted territory at this point, but we're going in the right direction. So we can highlight certain things that, you know, in the industry, this is probably more handled through operating and we should start thinking about it in the future.
That would be helpful, okay.
For example, because like the, it's not up there now, the, like purchasing vehicles like Bobcat and I forget what else was there, you have the vent track and snowplow, whatever, those aren't aidable, are they?
Nope.
Yeah, and again, not everything that we put up there, we didn't consider A, strictly maintenance need, during some of that stuff shouldn't be up there, but as Dan was collecting and as Matt was collecting all of this stuff, we put it up there. As we take off, it's not going to be lost, we'll put it on a loan list, you know, so we have to consider it in our operating costs.
Then I have a couple of questions on actually some specific items that are up there. One on the high school, it looked like you had sanding and refinishing gym A, gym A floor twice. So I just wondered, was there a distinction made between the two?
Yes, because I know that we have, there's gym B and gym A.
But you have them both listed as gym A.
Yep.
So I'd rather not do it twice.
Yep, oh yeah.
It didn't say that it was going to be outside.
Okay. And also, I noticed in the maintenance and operations and transportation, you have those security cameras, which I assume are outside security cameras. Am I to assume then the ones that are listed in the high school are internal security cameras?
That's currently been proposed, yes.
We are actually working on that sculpture.
Because.
We're both, Mr. Landry and Mr. Colman to talk about concepts to be considered, so we've discussed before, what we're looking at, I'm not sure what the, we had some numbers where it was going to be a combination of internal, a lot of common areas, at least at the larger schools, and extra for the parking lots and some of the problems.
Well, I would like those separated, costs for outside versus internal. And then a couple other, at Glenmont, the big backyard issue, I would, if I remember correctly, and I could be way off on this one, but wasn't there some environmental grants or something that were, that provided some of that trail work and some of the work out there? Is it possible, I know, you know, things are drying up everywhere, but is it possible instead to try and get some, that seems like something that you might be able to get funding from some other source through grant work or something. Is, is that possible and is that something we should be considering for that?
We can look into it.
I don't know who funded it before and, you know, if they're still doing something like that, but is that something that we should at least consider?
Yeah, that was a DEC grant, I believe, many, many years ago, and I don't think that program still exists. Like anything, as Dan mentioned, we're working with NIMO for potential funding source that may defer or, or may, I guess, take away some monies or help with some of that, the EPC potentially, NYSERTA, anything that we can do to, to help with these costs, we'll take advantage of it.
Okay, maybe even the green committee or whatever can, can help you look and see if there's some, some funding for that kind of thing. Because I would think there would be on that kind of thing for outdoor educational kind of thing. And the last question I have on that is also at Glenmont, well, actually it was in a couple schools and I didn't quite understand what you were talking about. When you're talking about these windows that are above the cubbies between the classrooms and the hallways, why, I mean, is there a safety issue or why, I mean, is it just an aesthetic thing that we're saying we don't like them anymore? Or why would we go and replace those?
The, the windows from a, I guess from our SAVE legislation and some of our drills, that's why most of those windows are covered with material. So this way nobody can see inside if we had to go to a lockdown.
Oh, how high are we talking?
They're, they're above the cubbies, so if your cubbies are about four feet high, it could be the other four feet or so. They don't meet current code because they don't give you the fire rating with the, with the hallways. And I think it was the thing at the time to potentially introduce some natural light into the classrooms. We have floor to ceiling, glass in some of the resource rooms at Glenmont, which you saw a picture of. And it's just a very large distraction, whether or not those officers, offices at one time were used for administrative offices, but they're using, they're being used for resource rooms, so it's a large distraction for students within those getting, getting the instructions. So that's why they're pretty much blocked off.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
I had a question on that. When reviewing the 2010 numbers and the new ones on this list that was given to us previously, where there's trace and label electrical panels and electrical panel boards, high school and middle school respectively, the cost went up from $25,000 to $425,000 in the difference between 2010, 2014. Is that just, the numbers are way off in 2010? Is this a totally different scope? I mean, I guess I don't understand labeling and tracing as being $400,000.
I may, I may let Beth answer that, but.
What we ended up finding out is the number, it's greater than what you had in 2010, but it's not as great. I want to say it's, it's somewhere in the, in the range of probably $35,000 for the middle school, $35,000 for the high school. So it's, it's up a little bit from what it was in 2010. It's primarily, it's, it's labor-intensive.
Those sound more recent, they're listed as 235 and 190 on the list that we, before, so your 35 sounds.
Right, yeah, the 35,000 numbers is a better number, it's, but it is, you know, it is definitely up from what it was before and I think it was just, you know, trying to take into account more of that labor work that would be included in that thing.
Was Beth, were there high schools?
It's on that huge priority list that you gave out through the computer beforehand.
Yeah.
And it's just on the ranked list, 24 and 25 on that list.
And, and what we're also doing with a lot of items too, is we're asking our trusted vendors to look at these things. And I know Beth has been, you know, not only National Grid and other organizations, but getting in people that really know how to do this stuff and kind of figure it out, is it going to be, it's like pulling a loose string, how far do you go with this? And that's one of the things we just have to work on, is what's, what is most important? Are you going to do the whole school? I mean, it's just a, a big placeholder right now because it is uncertain, we're not quite sure yet. We might have to have someone come out and do a test run to see how long it would take them and what, what's involved. But it's, it's definitely not as, it's not that small a number, I guess.
Back, back on the roofs, and I think you had said that the earliest you were thinking of was the 2014 construction. What's the timeframe that SED takes on approvals and is there any possibility that some of the ones that really need repair could be sooner?
Yes, you, right now, we're looking typically, boy, last week, we talked about this, it's review period's about 12 weeks on average. We do know that on a single, I call it a single trade roofing, that if you do put together an expedited package, like a phase one of the whole thing, which you can do, and send that to SED, usually a single separate trade like that, it goes in a separate queue along with other roofs or windows or doors, single stuff, and those do get reviewed faster. I can't vouch for, you know, faster might be two weeks faster. But there are ways to do that. I know timing is going to be a big issue because technically you don't want to really be tearing roof off until it's summertime and kids are out. So that's really an issue to, to work backwards from. So we will be looking at that if, you know, if so desired.
Okay, just want to be clear on what you said, that that amount, total amount includes, includes contingencies, softies, or none of that?
Oh, we're going to get to that.
I wrote the same thing.
We, yep, yep, because what.
Because we haven't even talked about any of the athletic work yet.
Yeah, yeah. And so at this point in time, I'm going to hand over a presentation to Pete Osborne. This is the part where we'll talk about the State Environmental Quality Review Act, site work, drainage, what you've done to date with some testing and taking tests and analysis comparisons and some of those options that I think you saw a while back. And I'll hand it over to Pete right now.
As you're making that transition, can I just make, ask, my assumption then is that this is a work in progress. It sounds like you were working right up through today to get it and that the numbers are going to be shifting, because I know some people have some questions and I haven't had a chance to look at each number in, in a copy of my own, but that this will be constantly being updated and eventually we will get a copy with the priority listing that Mrs. Biermann asked for. So this is, this is for tonight and we'll be getting updates and adjustments for us to keep, thank you.
Good evening. This is, just to bring you up to date, where we are with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is mandated by law to precede any referendum that you so set. Just to, we are in process and, where's the, hey Dan, where's the mouse? Okay, here's where we are right now, we're in the middle of this part of the process. We've sent out requests for the school district to be the lead agency to interested and involved agencies and also at the same time, in that same letter requesting if they have any concerns or information that they want to put on the table for the, that review. But we're in the middle of this process and we're anticipating wrapping up about the 15th of December. And just in time for the Board of Education to take action if they so choose on December 19th. We actually have already started receiving some of the agency letters back, so, but they have 30 days to respond from when we send those out, so that's why we give it 30 days. So that's where we are in the seeker process. Is there any questions on that while I'm on this slide?
If I can just add, the reason why we've explained the seeker is this does not commit the board to anything, that's something that the board will discuss I'm sure later this evening. But in order to make sure that we do our due diligence, we wanted to make sure we started this process one way or the other because it also has a time impact in regard to when things have to be done as well. So although you do apply for the seeker, if the board decided not to go forward with anything, it would not make either, any difference either way. But if you do decide to go forward with any type of project, this is one process that would already be in process of working towards this.
Right, this, this is not binding on anything, you know, you could decide to not to do anything and then this is all moot point. But as Dr. Douglas said, we need to have, have, you need to take an action on the seeker 45 days prior to a referendum. Actually, you need to do the seeker process before you can set the referendum, Pete. So that's why we did this, just to keep things moving along. And the first, the earliest possible referendum date is in there in yellow and it could be later than that, but that's the earliest at this point in time. Okay, the other thing we're doing, and we're working with Greg and his people, and we were taking a look at your existing fields. So we spent a lengthy day out in the cold snowy weather the other day and looked at every single field. We spent some time with Greg when he could spare the time and then we spent the rest of the time with Andy out in the fields. And we looked at every field, we're taking soil samples from every field, we're going to have them analyzed. Because at the end of the study here, we'll have a report that, that kind of gives you an assessment of each field and recommendations for improvement on each field. But just as a broad brush, these three fields right here really are in good shape. I was pretty impressed with them just from a visual point. They have a nice crown on them, so they shed water probably nicely. They seemed to when we were out there. And then as we work further down here, some of these fields could use some work, this one in particular, probably because it gets beat up by all the football teams. I know, I know that the practice field was oriented the other way this year, but you can still see where this field was pretty beat up over the, over the previous years. As you work down towards here, you got a low, low spot in this corner here. This field is okay, except it gets really wet down in this end here. And then you got a lot of wear in some of these fields here, probably because of all the PE activities you put on it. The one that surprised me with this field here, this, this field could use some work. It's, I have a soil probe and in addition to taking the soil samples, I put the soil probe down in quite a few of these fields. I was able to get that soil probe down further than I've ever gotten them on anybody's field. I could not get that probe any more than three and a half to four inches on that soccer field. It's very compacted underneath the topsoil there. So my guess is it doesn't drain really well because of that. And there's a lot of weeds in there, so that would also indicate that, because the weeds are pretty tolerant of certain conditions where the grass isn't and they'll take advantage of things and crowd the grass out. So I'm, I'm guessing, and the soil analysis we get back will probably tell me, but that, that field is, is, is really compacted underneath and not draining, not draining well. And then the, the game field out here, I think that could use some work too, and obviously we have that on the agenda here. And this, this basically, Greg was kind enough to share where the fields were arranged for both fall and spring. I just showed the fall here because that shows most of them. Obviously in the spring, some of these other fields would be baseball and softball fields. And then the soccer ones are probably lacrosse fields. You have a lot of activities to put on some of these fields. At one point, I think it was like six different soccer teams on some of these fields, you know. teams on some of these fields, you know, with full practices, and then probably, you know, half of the games at home here. So there's a lot of activity there. These are the options that were on the table. Option one is keeping your existing track as is, maybe recoding it, and then installing a new grass field inside the track. Basically, this would be going back down to the subgrade and coming back up and putting in good drainage, putting in... Topsoil, we take off, we screen it, we'd probably amend it to get some more organics in there, putting in a irrigation system to help keep it watered efficiently, and putting a new stand of grass on, whether it's sod or seed. Option two is keeping the track the way it is, but adding two lanes to the outside of the six lanes, so you have an eight-lane track all the way around, and then putting in an artificial turf on the inside. But you're going to get a very narrow width soccer field on the inside of that. The outside line here is, that would be a soccer field. Option three is a equilateral, is basically redoing everything. Taking the track and doing an equilateral track, which is a wider track this way. So that would be pushing out more this way, and putting an artificial turf on the inside of that. You'll get more... That's a full-sized seventy-five yard wide soccer field there. Option four is a broken-back track system, or sometimes, it's called an international track system, where you have even wider width to it. And again, this is the seventy-five yard wide soccer field. So you can see how much wider it is, and you get better corner kicks off of here, whereas here, you're still probably doing corner kicks off the track. So those are the four options, and the four options that Dan had in his cost estimate. Just to give you a real-world picture of what some of those would look like, this would be your current field with an eight-lane track and an artificial turf on the inside. That's what this is, an artificial turf. And that's how narrow it would be. And in this particular case, they did turf all the way around, so they use these for, you know, practice stations or whatever. But that would be similar to option two. And then, going to the other extreme, this is a broken-back track with a full-size soccer field on the inside, and that gives you the other extreme. And then, the equilateral track configuration in option three is somewhere in between. So just to give you kind of a real picture of what it would look like. And then, we always get a lot of questions on things about artificial turf. So we put together this slide part here from frequently asked questions of us, and they are cost, injuries, health and environment, maintenance, and warranty and replacement. So we put together some information on that. It's not exhaustive at this point. And I do have a huge black binder here that looks like the Manhattan Phone Book, that has just about every study we could possibly find in it on a lot of these issues here. Cost. This is something we did a few years ago. Down in the corner, you'll see it's based on 'oh-seven' construction cost. But just to give you a picture, between a natural turf and an artificial turf, the initial investment is probably a two-to-one ratio. The natural turf would be basically doing what I said, would be to just take it down to subgrade, build it back up, and include things like irrigation system and condition the soil, so that we have a really good growing medium. Maintenance cost, this is an average that we've gotten. We've done a lot of research with different school districts that we've worked with, and believe it or not, that's the average that people spend on a, basically, a game field. But, you know, we've had any worse from, you know, maybe eight thousand to maybe thirty-five thousand, closer to forty. That's the average. On the artificial turf side, seventy-five hundred dollars a year. If you ask the turf industry people, they'll tell you five thousand dollars a year. We kind of bumped it up a little bit, because you're not only grooming the turf, but there's also moving things around, setting up for the next game and things. So there's a little bit more than maybe they would indicate. But honestly, I've even asked some districts that we put turfs into, and I called up one guy, and he said he spent eight hundred and thirty-five dollars on maintaining his field one year, which I couldn't believe, but that's what he told me. Replacement costs, I'm showing zero for the natural turf. Really, depending on how you use it and the weather conditions, you can beat it up and need to recondition or replace it. That may be in part of the maintenance cost. Or there may be times when you really do need to, you know, to redo the field, but I'm showing, being conservative here, showing a zero number. Replacement cost on the artificial turf, that number represents about five hundred thousand to replace the carpet, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for removing it and getting rid of it. However, that, since we did these numbers, that number is, can slightly change, at least a hundred and fifty thousand number, because a lot of people are recycling the turf. We did this at a couple of projects, where the, there is an aftermarket use for your old carpet. There are companies that will buy it and will recondition it and use it for bedding cages and indoor places. So we're being, again, we're being conservative here, but more and more, there's a recycling involved in that process. So that hundred and fifty thousand out of that six hundred and fifty thousand may be diminished somewhat by the time you need to replace it. Total cost is there. It's, again, a two-to-one ratio. However, the thing that you get the benefit out of is, an artificial turf technically can take... Well, I'll back up a second. A grass field can only take so many activities, I don't care how well it's taken care of, can only take so many activities before you really beat it up. And weather has a huge factor in that. If you get a really rain, rainy fall, real rainy spring, and you're using the field, you're going to beat it up. And then, you're going to have that maintenance cost to come back and fix it. Artificial turf, it's really how many hours in a day do you want to operate? So conservative, we say you can put three times the activities or better. In other words, it would take the place of three natural grass fields, and in some cases, it could take the place of five, depending on the hours of the day you want to operate in. I actually had... So we're showing there, for a natural turf, about fifty activities per year. That would be twenty-five in the fall, twenty-five in the spring. I'm showing on the other side for artificial turf, two hundred a year. I basically took the, from April to mid-June, and then September to October, and the number of weeks that were involved in there, and figured out, on the average, if you're playing one and a half games on the average during the week, and two and a half on a Saturday, and maybe two on a Sunday, that's how the number came up. However, most people are using it, and that's why it's in the blue underneath. Most of the turfs that we've been involved in helping districts install are using it that much or more. But using the four thousand and the one thousand uses over the, for the total cost, you end up with a two-to-one ratio or better the other way, where on a cost-per-use basis, the artificial turf ends up being less expensive, because you can use it more. And that's followed true for every single one that we've done. So that's kind of a broad brush on cost. Injuries. Because of the way the turfs are today, they are an infill on top, so they act more like natural earth. So when an athlete plants their foot and turns, it gives, just like natural earth, unlike the old astroturf, which was just a straight carpet. If you planted your foot, you might have... Excuse me. Your foot might stick, and then you turn, and your body goes one way, and your foot stays the other way. That doesn't really happen on the infill turfs today, and that's really one of the major improvements on the artificial turf. The key is the resiliency of it, and that would be something that's measurable, and we would have the district test that at least once a year, and that's called a G-max rating. And you want that to be, anything two hundred or above is unsafe. So it definitely needs to be under two hundred, and we never really like to see it go above one eighty. And then, it could be too soft, too. I mean, nobody wants to play on beach sand either. So it's got to be within a certain range. The difference between an artificial turf and a natural grass field is, the natural grass fields are so variable. You could have a really drought, like we had this last summer, and unless you're pouring the water on the fields, and a field to grow properly really needs to have an inch of water a week, and that's a lot of water. To, if you're not pouring the water on it, then it's going to get hard, and it could be harder, as hard as concrete. So again, that could be unsafe. Or it could go the other way, and get so muddy that it's like playing in a mud ball, and again, it's, it could be unsafe. So, and the use on the field, and this is the extreme example, because this is your football practice field, but pictures are hard to capture everything. But a lot of the fields out there have, you know, a lot of undulations in them, and they can pose a hazard to athletes. So, you know, taking care of a natural grass field is a lot of work and takes a lot of time and money. The nice thing about the artificial turfs is they are very, very, very consistent. They have a level plain surface, it stays that way, the weather doesn't affect it, and you could play in the rain and not have any mud at all, and it won't hurt the field at all. The one in my district, it went in a couple of years ago, I showed up in a downpour to go to a parent-teacher thing, and I couldn't believe that the soccer team was out there playing. It was absolutely pouring, and they were out there, and there was no water on the field, because it's a total drain-through. So it never really sits on the top. Health and environment, I've heard things about things like bacteria, specifically MRSA. It's not an environment that's friendly to growing things like that, so I don't really even understand where that came from. You're more likely to pick up a MRSA-type thing in the school, in the locker room, or wrestling mats, actually, are probably a high item there. So it really comes down to, you know, understanding what the environment of the thing is. It, and it does get hot, it will get hot in the summertime, in the heat of the summer, it can get, you know, fairly hot. However, most of the play really doesn't happen at that time. And actually, the heat can also benefit you on the other ends of, you know, early in the spring, you can get out on it sooner, because the snow melts off of it way before the snow will melt off in the natural grass field. And you'll probably get at least one or two months on either side of the, in the spring and the fall season, because in the fall, when it's raining and it's cold, and you really can't play on your fields, you can play on this. It's absolutely fantastic for PE, because I've seen districts that are running several PE classes out on their field nonstop, right up through until the snow starts to pile up on the thing. And you're not tracking all the mud back into the school. So it, I think it's a great PE station, too. Maintenance. On the left, you see all the normal things that you should be doing on your natural grass field. That's a lot of work. Ask Andy how much time he actually does painting on the fields, and that's a lot. On artificial turf, the lines are all inlaid, they're part of the carpet, you don't have to paint any lines anymore. And all you really need to do is have a tractor with a unit like this that grooms the field, and you probably only need to groom it maybe two, one to two times a month. And that's about it. And then, the other maintenance would be, you know, because you're going to, and I've seen this at every place that has one, you're going to have back-to-back-to-back events. I went to my district for my daughter's field hockey game, and while we were there, they had a football game on there, a freshman football game. So we had to wait for the football game to be done, but once they were done, all they did was pick up all the paraphernalia for football, roll the goals out for field hockey, and they were playing field hockey. So that's the thing with the artificial turf, is you can put a lot of activities on this Warranty and replacement. What we like to do is make sure that the vendors, and we'll bake that into the specifications, have a warranty that's actually backed by a third party, in case, God forbid, they go out of business, and it's happened. There's an insurance policy backing that up. And we want to have at least, depending on the type of carpet that you select, you can get anywhere from a minimum of an eight-year warranty, and we're getting up to as many as twelve-year warranties on turf carpets. And that's if we put a pad underneath that. And that's nice, because it kind of stretches it out towards a fifteen years. This is a cutaway of a typical turf. You have the drainage underneath, you have a gravel blanket that's an open grated stone that drains through to the drains. There's a little bit of a leveling course there to true and level that up. And then, either you put a pad there, or you just put the carpet right on there. That million-dollar figure that I showed you, that pays for all of this, plus the paraphernalia around to nail it to. But when you go to replace it, all you need to do is take the carpet off, true and level the leveling course there, because you're going to, you know, rut it up a little bit by taking the carpet off, and put a new carpet on. So everything underneath that carpet, you pay for, and it will be there for the next time you put a carpet on. You don't need to do anything for that.
And that's it. Want to go through this, or? We just have a, actually, we're getting towards the end of our presentation, so we only have a few more slides left. This explains, or just shows, the four options that Pete had talked about and shown on his slides, and the costs associated with those for 2014 construction. As you can see, F1 is resurfacing the track, leaving the track as in, as is, and doing natural turf within. So six-lane, two hundred feet. And then, the others are synthetic turf with eight-lane track options.
Was there any option, or any thought given to even trying to find another location for it instead of redoing, it in the confines of where you're talking about?
Yeah. Option five, right. There was some consideration to that, and in fact, Pete's team even did a graphic kind of showing that over at the soccer field that you said needed some, that was highly compacted?
That cost, I believe, was slightly higher than option four, because over there, you have no infrastructure as far as bleachers, lights, things like that. So, but it was probably comparable or slightly higher than option four.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about the field? Just, I sent a...
Just, I sent a website over to the board earlier that I was kind of cruising around yesterday. And my sense is with the injuries, half the articles say that they're greater with natural grass and half say they're greater with artificial turf. But I went to a presentation by Frank Rossi at the school board conference, who's a consultant with the Olympics and NFL teams. And I asked him about injuries. And I'd just like your perspective on this because he said for concussions, artificial turf is better in prevention because they're softer. But he said for ACL injuries, natural grass is better. He said when a kid slides on the field, you want the kid to slide. Do you have any sense of your experience with that? As I said, when I went through some, several articles, it was a 50/50 toss-up, so it's...
Yeah. We periodically touch base with the schools that we have worked with and have put in artificial turfs. And for the most part, they've seen a decrease in injuries, even the ACL injuries. So that's just my, my own research on the schools that we've worked with, specifically with the infill turfs because they do give more like natural earth. And with respect to Frank Rossi, if you're talking, you can't equate, I don't know if he was, but you can't equate NFL fields with high school fields. Because they don't, you guys don't have the money to take care of a grass field like they do, or even to build one like they do because most of them are sand-based fields.
Well, I don't think he was equating, I'm just saying that he has PhD in turf management and that's more for his stature of what he could comment on.
Right.
But the big studies are all done by the NFL. And they're all comparing a pristine grass field with, versus artificial turf.
Yeah, I mean, honestly...
Those are the studies that say that ACL repairs are better on natural grass. But they, every orthopedic journal's 50/50 on it definitely and says that you can't compare. Exactly like you said, a high school field that's muddy is much worse in terms of injuries than an artificial turf. A perfect NFL field is the safest. But we certainly are never going to have that.
Right. No, but the school journal articles I read said there's basically 50/50. So I can't credit it all for saving. The other thing I wanted to ask you about was about, perhaps that fill has changed. But I was reading about a 2007 study by a consumer group in Rochester that found arsenic and chromium and cadmium and acetone, et cetera, in the fill of not, of artificial turf fills. And I'll give you a copy of it. Has the fill changed the composition?
Essentially, the fill is recycled tires. They grind them up and then sift out the fine particles and weed out the bigger particles so they have a specifically graded grain size to them. That, that study, if it's the one I'm thinking of, and I think I have it in my book...
It's a Ramp 2007.
Yeah, Ramp. They, they did all this stuff in a laboratory setting where they broke this material down with acids and things like that to get the component parts of the rubber, which if you do that, yeah, you're going to get these toxic materials out of the rubber. But in, in the, in the rubber itself, this stuff's all bound up and it's not bioavailable. That's the part of the study. I, I just, I, a former biology major, I was kind of aghast that they would try to make that leap of faith from a laboratory breakdown to what would happen naturally on the field. In fact, the, I think part of this stuff came up a couple of years ago. And the New York State Health Department looked into this. And they, hopefully it's still on their website. They had all the information on their website about artificial turfs. And they had looked into all this stuff and found out that none of this stuff was, was a health risk or an environmental risk.
And do you have to disinfect, how do you clean them? I know in previous presentations you talked about disinfecting the field. Does it have to be disinfected?
You know, that's something that came up when, again, probably back about the same time that that study was done. I know of nobody that disinfects their field of, of the ones that we've done. It's, it's not an environment that grows pathogens really because it, I think you get more pathogens on a natural grass field because there's all sorts of microorganisms and things in earth where there's nothing, nothing on the turf or in the infill that would support that kind of life. So the UV light would knock down those things and just the temperature differentials, the swing on, I think, would prevent that. And I think that actually was in one of the studies that was in the book I have here.
So what I'd like to do is walk through this. This is probably one of the most important concepts for us to understand as we put together a conceptual budget for a project that may consider for capital construction. Ed and I and Sandra and Pete have been putting projects together for decades. And it's really, really important to understand this part. And it's, everything's, it's not fixed. This is, you know, this is just a snapshot in time of where we are in a certain stage. And these things may change. But when we're at putting a project together, we know that often projects don't go very well because of budgetary issues. And we see it because from the beginning, things weren't budgeted well enough. I often say a job well begun is a job half-done. So you see, we start with the hard cost, which was that incredibly long list that we went through in each building, tallying up the scope items that we saw that could be on the project that we're talking about. Design contingency and construction contingency are two separate things. They're similar. Design contingency, right now, you're asking us to come up with a cost to replace your roof or fix the masonry that is having issues. Typically, at this stage, conceptual budget, we come up with our best square foot costs or unit costs that we know of and that should cover the typical scope of that work. But we do know without any testing or getting, I'd say, third-party reports and other teams coming in to look at things or take things apart, we don't know what we might find until we really get to that point. So what we, or as we're looking at these scope items, we may decide, you know, we had these three rooms in this wing that we wanted to do, but maybe we should do all five. And that's part of a contingency. That's called scope creep. Where we, we never do scope creep. But it always gets in there that we want to do better. Like if we're looking at a room and we're just fixing the carpet and the walls and the ceiling need to be done, why would we do it half, you know, half-banked? So that is part of what a design contingency is. It's not to be confused with the cost of design. It's just setting yourself a little buffer, some breathing space. And we usually start in on these projects, especially complex projects like these that are multiple buildings, having a healthy design contingency. And eventually, that gets absorbed into the project because if we set it at that amount or whatever amount we choose, we're going to go through that with testing, uncovering things as we develop things and understand it. We haven't designed anything yet. But we're going to be designing things, really looking at how things are put together. We may have to cut open hard ceilings to see what's above, those kinds of things. So that is part of what the design contingency is for. Again, it could also be to help cover some changes in design that we'd like to do three months from now. This is a better way of doing it, why don't we do that? They also help if we're under budget and we have a little bit of money left over that we could put towards things when we go out to bid as alternates. We've heard of bid alternates before where you can either add something on or delete something if you have budget issues. So that's part of the design contingency. The construction contingency is there for a few reasons as well. There's market fluctuations that we may or may not know at the time of bidding. Steel is scarce because China is buying up all the steel, something like that. And that did happen a few years ago where steel skyrocketed. Another issue is just change orders. When you're doing demolition, you may uncover something, you know, God forbid you don't have enough money to cover that through your construction contingency, and you do that through change orders. So those are the two contingencies. One is, is before construction, the other's after. The third is our incidental or soft costs. And Dr. Douglas talked about that earlier. When working with fiscal advisors or people that help you do your bond and your tax and figure that all out, we do know that there's a range between 20 and 25 percent. And that varies as well. But there's definitely looking at what is defined or encumbered in terms of fees, in terms of things that we may or may not buy through the project. Some things we may have, some things not. Furniture, fixtures and equipment is one. If you're doing a new classroom addition, you need furniture to outfit those new rooms that you're doing. In this case, oftentimes in renovations, if we're not making any significant alteration to what's there and it stays the same purpose or function, you may have very little furniture that you need to apply for or, you know, hold. But we show it there because these are some of the costs that aren't necessarily understood at the time we're putting this together. And it's very important to make sure we understand that we have those things covered in regards to however big or small the project is. Printing and reproduction expenses, SED requires a large set of drawings and specifications. In bidding, that's the worst. We have to print out many, many documents for bidders to look at and bid on. So those are some of those expenses. Legal fees, insurances, all of those things, they're all incorporated in the soft costs. So that is sort of my primer because now as I, was it Lynn? Someone asked, how do we get to the end of this and sum up and where do we land? Again, this is a very fluid and dynamic process we're going through. And so what I want to do is compare it to the, what was previously on the table to where we are today. We left off with 12 million and change. We were looking at that list before. So what we, and that covers everything except for the site work. So depending on what you want to do with site work and fields, those are those four options that were on the table before. I think there's something off with option number four. That's a deal. Don't take that one. Is it right underneath it there? Option four is about 4.2. So what we did is took a look at just adding up what we had before, adding some design contingency, construction contingency and soft cost. And in reality, the project would be around 21-ish and change, million dollars. Knowing that we've put some escalation, inflation figures into the 2004 numbers, that 15 million at the top, depending on what you do with your turf and field options, you end up with adding some design contingency. You can see we're using option three. And you come up with around 26 million and change for that particular thing. And that's everything that we've looked at so far. There's things in there we know we're going to take out, but it's the whole enchilada. It's comprehensive. We haven't prioritized anything. And that's kind of the snapshot of where we are right now today.
Do you know, do you happen to know, just very ballpark, the items that you had checked off as EPC, how much that totaled?
Yes. They are, they are between four and $5 million.
Thank you.
And that leads me to that. Is there any other question or discussion on, this was just simple math of what we've talked through all night?
With all those design costs, whatever, the four to five million under the energy performance contract still be part of the fund issue or if they're separated out, do those costs go down then?
Those costs will go down. Even on the energy performance contract, if whomever's doing it, if it's Johnson Controls or Siemens or someone like that, we would still want to hold some contingencies there as well. Because until everything's peeled away and we know what we're doing, there's some uncertainty about the extent, the scope, the depth and breadth of all that work. So they will have it so you could potentially just take that off the bottom line because everything's apples to apples.
This last slide should look familiar to you. This is the summary. It kind of helps us translate these multi-millions of dollars that we could potentially be spending on the projects. And we break it down into what it might mean to a taxpayer per $5 million of project. So if the total project was $5 million and we assume that state ed would aid approximately 95, or would consider 95 percent of those costs to be eligible for aid, applying our building aid ratio to that would give about a $3.3 million amount of aid coming to the district. If we look at what that would be paid out to us over a 20-year period and then we net that from our annual debt service cost, it means the local share that we would be responsible for per $5 million would be about $135,000 of impact on the district's budget. And if you convert that to what it would cost then in additional taxes on a $250,000 home, it would be about $12 per year. So just order of magnitude for every $5 million of project cost, it would be approximately $12 per year to the taxpayer.
I just used the, going to 510/50.
I was, I was giving the abbreviated summary.
Yes, very nice. We've heard this before, but at this point, that is the presentation. It would be really open to questions from the board for anyone here, any information that's been presented.
Judy, I mean, you've got 5% up there. That's kind of high in today's market, isn't it?
Yes, I wanted to use a conservative estimate. The current interest rates, if we were going out to market within the next six months or so, you'd probably be looking at 3.5% to 4% potentially in interest. So those costs could be lower. I just would have, in quoting this, wanted to use a worst-case scenario.
Can I also ask that, given the amounts that were, the presentation were beyond 15 million, would we assume that for every 5 million that was added, it just adds $12?
Correct.
Yeah, potentially at the 20 million, it would be $48 per year. And then at the 25 million, it would be $60 per year. Other questions for Ashley McGraw or Pell Osborn? But now it sort of turns to the discussion as we started at our last meeting. In order to go forward, we need a little direction from the board. So I would turn this over to our president to have any discussion on whether or not the board is going to consider any type of bond, not necessarily what's in it, but whether the district should proceed at this point forward.
How are people feeling about that? Do people want to go forward with at least a bond and not really sure what's going in it?
I would say, just looking at some of those pictures of the roofs and the various buildings in front of the building here, we need to do something. I mean, if we don't act now, you're talking another year, that adds another year of planning and whatnot. So I think it's, it would be, we'd be remiss if we didn't go forward with some sort of bond at this point.
We can't continue to keep delaying maintenance on the buildings because we're going to run into some real problems. I think we're all a little bit shell-shocked right now in terms of the numbers we're seeing. So I don't have any sense on where we would be looking at, but I think we do, I would say we definitely would be looking to do some sort of bond.
I would say that we would be negligent if we did not consider that the level and scope of the repairs that are needed just to main, not even to maintain the buildings, but to fix longstanding or emerging safety issues and not even cosmetic issues, we would be negligent if we did not. Again, not saying what would be in the bond and the level and scope of it, but we obviously need to take care of our buildings and our students and staff.
And I concur too. And...
And I know we've seen some writings on how people felt in the past, maybe we weren't addressing some of these maintenance issues. And let's say maybe it was 10 years ago or so that we were planning the last bond issue. Obviously, the roofs were in different condition at that point than they are now. And, you know, we have done some roof work in past bond issues. Obviously, it's an ongoing thing to, you know, continuously have to do that. I feel that, you know, there are definitely some needs here that really need to be addressed. I mean, to me, the biggest one is the middle school facade, the stone around, you know, round roof, but I think there are probably other similar issues. I think, you know, again, we would be negligent, being with my colleagues here, that we need to address some of these issues. I'm just not sure, I agree with the shell shock, I, the 25 million kind of is extreme. So I'm not sure how far we can go, but I think there's some things that we really need to do.
Okay.
Yes, I think we, you know, we're going to have to do some kind of bond. I don't know to what extent. I, I think given the economy, given the fact that we can't expect anything more in state aid, you know, the budget's going to be tight again this year. I, you know, I would like to think that maybe some of these items can be put into the operating budget, but I think there, some of these are just too big and we need to do them. And the other thing we have to remember is the 70% possible state aid helping us pay for these items now. And we have heard that, who knows if that amount would change in the future as the state budget gets tighter, the money might not be as generous to help us on some of these items. And they have to be done. I mean, our schools are falling apart in some places and we can't let that happen.
Kate?
I agree. The buildings have to be fixed. I think, I agree with Laura, the ultimate goal is to get these things back into the budget when we are able to, which is hopefully the near future. And as for the turf, it's, it's not our decision what the community builds. It's our decision whether to offer it to the community to decide. And you can tell me it's been 60/40, it's been 50/50, it's been whatever. That's close enough to me to put it out to the community and let them decide if they want to pay for it. It's not our decision to decide what we're going to build. It's just, it's the community's decision.
Okay. And I agree with everybody here. I think we need to definitely go out for the bond, especially with the 70% reimbursement and also with low interest rates. So I think all seven of us.
In general, the board is at consensus that we need to do something. What? It's over the next couple of board meetings and information. Well, with that, at least that gives us some direction. Is there anything you need from us as well? One of the things I've heard.
Well, the presentation.
Was the presentation, you'll have that tomorrow.
With, with the priorities.
Well, the priorities, that's what I'm about to speak about. Okay? One of the things I've heard that you need is the priorities, just like Ashley McGraw also needs that from us. We have our facilities committee, that's what I was speaking about a little bit earlier. I know Mr. Nolte, myself, as well as Ms. Kehoe and some other administrators are going to be meeting and trying to go from our initial list to assist the architects as well. But we'd also like to sit down with the board subcommittee on facilities and show that to you as well to find out if we're missing anything first and then relay that as soon as possible to the architects as well so that then they can update their presentation to show those high, mediums and low, even though we might have some higher highs and so forth. So that's one thing we have to do. So I would ask, I think the facilities committee, you'll probably get an email tomorrow if you can get back to us as soon as possible to try to set up something where we could get together maybe for an hour. We'll try to have a majority of the items already from the district's perspective as well as from Greg's office's perspective already laid out so that we can have some general discussions over the material that you saw tonight. Are there other things? We've tried to give athletic costs to you, field uses, usage if there were potential turf and then any other emergent needs that have been coming up, playgrounds and so forth. Other?
Can we get another list that has the energy performance projects that we think will be covered under that separated out so we can?
Okay. If we could try to get, what I try to do is give the board some information by Friday. I know tonight's Wednesday. If we could have maybe a conference call or something tomorrow just to try to make sure that we have all the information, so that would be one.
And beyond that, not just the list, but, I mean, we haven't really talked about that at all. I mean, you know, what, what are the benefits of doing it? I mean, we need to get some information on, should we be doing it or not? So it wouldn't be just the numbers, but I think we need some more information from the experts as to, should we do these under the energy thing? Should we do these under this? How should we?
And that is one, one item that we have already had the discussion.
Right.
With Ashley and I would ask, I know Dan is planning on being here on the 5th as well to try to cover some of that material. So the 5th is a further discussion of tonight's protocols as well as the information that you're asking to come back to you. And luckily, we have that scheduled just in seven days.
The other question, which I had before, and I don't know if Greg, if there are items that you think could go back into your budget instead, would that then put them on the low priority or is there, or if they're high priorities and if we don't do them in bond and you don't get them in your budget, you're going to be sunk, then if they could somehow be identified? Because we need to make sure that if it is something that has to be done and, you know, not knowing right now how the budget process is going to work, you may need to keep them in here as a high priority, but we ought to have them identified knowing that if we can get them back in the regular budget, we might want to do that.
And I think Greg and I have had those conversations and I think the board has recognized this even at the last budget discussions, that it is imperative as we heal our fiscal difficulties of the past where some of these reductions have played out, we need to start preparing. This is sort of, how would you say, a flowing river and we're trying to finally set a dam in place and make sure that we get caught up and then move forward. But I think we also have to be very proactive in not allowing things to defer and building them back into the budget as well. So I'm glad, I imagine Greg is also very pleased to hear that discussion being part of this.
But although we can't commit the board, we keep saying, well, pull some of those things out, put them in your operating budget and we have to be mindful, and though we can't make promises, but if we ask Mr. Nolte and Dr. Douglas to work to pull those things out, to realize if they're on this list, we, once they get that additional review and we should be mindful and always be checking it, we can't just suddenly pull the rug out during budget time and say.
Well, that's, I wasn't saying pull them, pull them out because that's what I actually was saying, the opposite. I was saying if it's a high priority item that needs to be done, it should be high priority in this, but also somehow marked so that we know that if we can get it in the operating budget, we'll put it in the operating budget. If we can't, at least it's on this list and we have it, we have it covered. But the, and if we end up getting it in the operating budget, maybe that's something else from this list.
Right. I was just making sure that we commit to saying if he's flagging for the operating budget, then we fund it if we can.
It's a caution. It's a, for us, it's starting to address the deferrals and taking a proactive measure for long-term stability. And I think we have the understanding of what the board would like to try to do. Others? Any, any other information?
Just in terms of the priority, any of the ones that are, you know, a low priority, I'd want a measurement on how, you know, how long could you defer that? Would it be a two-year, three-year, four-year deferral because?
Sort of so that we start the plan, not just for now, just like we're doing with our budget.
I mean, this is already a, a 25-year plan and we're two years into the plan. So I would imagine most of them are going to be pretty high-level at this point.
Well, that gives us some work over the next couple of days, I'm sure, to prepare in seven days, but I'm sure everybody's up to it. The other question is, as you've come to consensus, there are four questions that the board is aware of that we're going to have to start answering. Each week, those questions become a little more pertinent to answer and right now you answered the first one. The one thing is if you are going to do a bond, you should consider when you feel that it would be appropriate to go out. One of the things I think the board has heard me say, and I think we've said at the meetings, is we also need to make sure that we do not do, necessarily do anything until we at least are having our discussions and revealing where our budget picture looks. I can tell you tonight, after talking with Mrs. Kehoe, that our budget picture is not as bleak as all the other districts that we're hearing from because of some of the very important actions that the district has taken last year, such as with the challenge of the cap, although no one likes to do it, it was a very important step to save programmatic offerings here, as well as the labor settlements that were put into place have provided some significant assistance to this coming budget. In addition, our newfound transportation savings will also set a much more positive budget. Although we are, I want everybody to understand, we are not out of the woods. We are still waiting for the effects of Hurricane Sandy and we know we have the TRS implications for this year's budget. But from our initial calculations from where we are rough, we look at, we know our tax levy, final tax levy calculation will be higher than last year, but we do not feel that we will be at that level this year. So as the picture becomes a little more clear as the days go by to rolling out the budget from the governor, we feel that we have at least a budget that we are going to be able to work within and try to work without many major reductions and that's what we're hoping for, providing nothing else changes. So that also needs to be part of this. If, knowing that, where does the board feel or have a discussion in regards to when maybe you would consider holding any type of referendum? With the understanding that, once the board acts, it's at least a minimum of 45 days before a referendum can be held, we are using 47 days just because we want to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of time.
Okay. Before we answer that, is there any participation in government students that need to leave? I don't think I see anybody, but I just didn't want to.
I think they're going to wait till the last meeting like last one. There was a lot of them.
Okay. So any thoughts on when we want to put the budget out?
Judy, the 70% aid, is that each fiscal year they assess that? So is there a possibility that would change as of March 31st or does that not change year to year based on the?
It changes in recent history. It has changed slightly, like less than half a percent from one year to the next. So that has been relatively stable. It's not so much an annual reimbursement amount, it's really pegged to any projects that are approved. So of the eligible costs for any given project, it would be reimbursed at approximately 70%.
So it's once the project is approved, that, that rate, reimbursement rate is guaranteed for the life of the project?
Locks in.
I know that you had a, the possible, the earliest date is March 5th. I'm fine with a March, April, I don't think going much beyond April, but March is fine with me. I don't want to be locked in on a specific date. I'd like to have a couple of weeks wiggle room because I think once the board starts discussing the individual items or the, you know, turf versus natural, I don't want to have to say, okay, this meeting, we have to decide this. I, I know we are on a timeline, but I want to have a couple of weeks wiggle room. So sometime in March works for me.
And I think when we were just looking at potential dates, right now looking if, and I can only use, say, a board date. Say the board put a resolution up on January 6th. 47 days from that would be the earliest a vote could be. We're not there, so it's just using that. If you use January 16th, I think the 45 days are right around March 5th. If you use February 2nd, I think that's one of the board dates. It's approximately about another 15 to 18 days later. But that's pretty much how a timeline would potentially run. I think what you've done is say that sort of timeframe, that I think helps us, that I could try to develop some timelines for the next meeting so that you can see it as well as the public can see it.
Lynn?
I don't have any definite date in mind. I just, you know, I don't think we should get into April because you have the April break and I just think it's tough. And then at that point, might as well wait for May, you know, with the budget vote, it almost seems so. I would think it'd be better to have it earlier if possible in March.
I mean, we could always have a special meeting to do the resolution.
Yep. Basically, whenever a resolution is done, it's 45 days and we, it's wise always to build in a couple of days buffer because you're obligated to get the public notice out and we're not the editors, so it could take one or two days, but usually within 24 hours it would be published. And then it's 45 days from that day.
We have board dates that we have set on the calendar. We could establish another one.
Correct.
I think March is probably a good goal for now. I agree with Charmaine. I don't think we need to be locked in too tightly, but I think March is a good goal. I also think that's a good time. It's far enough away from the May budget vote, but also starting in February, we will have seen the possible budget for the year and so we'll know how those interact because I think we can't do either of these in isolation. They, you know, we have to be aware of what we're doing with a possible increase in the budget. So that's going to have an impact on this as well.
And I think we can give you much clearer projections on the budgetary in January as more gets known from the state as well. So I think that helps the whole board, even with the resolution.
March is down. Yeah, and I would agree with March.
Well, what I'll do for the next meeting is at least establish the earliest possible, the latest possible time for a resolution for start of March and the end of March so that at least you can, I can work backwards from that date. I think a wise gentleman who is one of the founders of Ashley McGraw said, I like picking the last, the date and work backwards. So use his mentality for that to try to get an accurate projection for the board.
And keep in mind, the April break comes early this year. I think it starts like March 3rd, so I would say early March.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much and thank you for our presentation tonight. I know there will be several more to follow, not necessarily in length, but give the board the answers between now and at least January. Okay, thank you.
Charmaine?
Are we, are we moving to the agenda now or?
Mm-hmm.
Before we do that, I just want to say, just because I ask questions about the field does not mean I have decided one way or the other. I think people can, can feel that because someone asks questions, while she may be for or against it. I haven't decided, but to me, to not question the athletic proposal as thoroughly as the roofs and the masonry is the board is not doing its due diligence. So I appreciate people hearing the questions. I expect answers throughout the process of any question that any of the board members asked, but I have not decided. And I just want to have clarification about the bond piece because I know Kate said something about putting stuff up. The bond, the board decides what is on the bond, is that, that's how the bond is created and then it goes up to voters unless the, the field piece is put up as something separate than the bond. Could you just clarify that, John, because I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, in the process, no matter what, the process has shifted from the community information to the board's discussion. Ultimately, the board will decide what goes up to vote, but the board doesn't have the final decision on whether something's approved. So if you put up 5 million, 10 million, the board makes that decision of what they feel the community, or the board puts up, in a better term, what they feel is the best sense of the board to move forward to the community with the understanding that the board supports what they're putting up. And then ultimately, the community decides, just like the budget. The final decision for anything with public schools, and it's the unique part of our government, it's the only part of our government that the community has 100% say.
And the last thing about Frank Rossi, he's the vice president of the school board and his presentation was based on the field at his school.
I wasn't sure. I know, John, that you're here tonight and I know you weren't here the one night we were talking about the fields because I think you were doing senior night. Did you want to say anything or?
John, we can't hear you.
Come forward with the microphone.
John, we can't hear you.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, we'll do the rest of this, right? Okay. Finance, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through D.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries. Professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through A. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Please.
Call in favor? Any opposed? Carries. It is recommended that the, this is support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through G.
Some move.
Second.
So second, any discussion? Call in favor? Any opposed? Carries. And it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence actions items A through B.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Trying to go slow.
Okay.
On B, it should actually be the summer enrichment program coordinator. That's the information you guys got a couple weeks ago, to approve the coordinator position.
And again, I mean, there's fees that are charged to participants, so that's not out of taxpayer money, it's self-funded.
Which will be funded through tuition.
On my copy, it says coordinator position. For some reason, on mine.
It just, it came out yesterday afternoon, I think.
For $1,000 a week, okay.
Anything else? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. And then, visitors on a non-agenda item. Future meetings, Wednesday, December 5th, that's going to be, is that going to be here at the high school?
It'll be at a regular place.
Okay. And then December 19th, and then January 2nd.
Yep.
And is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.